Good evening and welcome to our Select Board Meeting of April 10th, 2025. Thank you for coming, and we are here to discuss the Berkshire Hills Regional School District's budget. Dr. Peter Dillon, the superintendent, will present the budget as it is created so far.
Okay.
Great. Thanks for giving us a chance to talk with you about this and give you a little update. As you probably know, the school district or the school committee of the school district voted to approve the budget. And I think you've all seen the assessment sheets, the net assessment or the net increase to the three-member towns is four and a half percent. And then it's different in each of the towns. In Great Barrington, it's 5.5% increase. In Stockbridge, it's a 5.76% increase. And in West Stockbridge, it's a negative 2.87 decrease. And you probably remember the budget's tied, thanks, to a couple of things. The number of students in each town is a percentage of the total number of district students. We're not carrying really significant capital costs this year, but there's the possibility of that as we go forward with a November 4th vote on the high school project. And this was a tough budget year for us. I'm sure you sort of read about it and heard about it. We recommended some additional or some initial reductions and then shifted that a little bit. And I'll go quickly, school by school and district by district. Initially, we recommended eliminating a third-grade position, reducing stipends and reducing or eliminating the purchase of a new English curriculum for the elementary school. We ended up backing off on eliminating the third-grade position, and we put that back in. But we did reduce stipends and the really significant purchase of a new English curriculum. At the middle school, it's more straightforward. We eliminated a math position and a computer tech design position. And of all the positions we eliminated, the computer tech design position is the one I have the most concerns about, and I'll come back to that. And then at the high school, we did sort of a combination of eliminating positions where people were retiring. So an English teacher retired. We had seven English teachers. Next year, we're just going to carry six English teachers. It's convenient when somebody retires and you have an extra person, right? That similarly happened with a computer teacher there. And we have a plan where a science teacher has room in his schedule to pick up computer classes, and he was co-teaching with the computer teacher, so that's okay. Initially, we recommended eliminating a whole phys ed position. We ended up just reducing it to a halftime position. We had one and a half French teachers and were really 1.3 French teachers, and we're going from 1.3 to 1 even. So that's a slight shift, but not a dramatic one. And then also in that position or in that building but held at the district level, we had an educational team lead, which is like a special ed teacher who does administrative stuff. They hold meetings, they do IEPs. We eliminated that position and are moving that person to another role within the district. And then the last one, we have a big grant-funded after-school program that's federally funded through the state. It's likely that money may be cut at the federal level, so we're eliminating that position as well. And the big impact on our budget this year, and you're also part of it, was the increase in insurance tied to the Berkshire Health Group. And then some other ones. Utilities, energy costs continue to go up, transportation and our contractual obligations. And then we don't send a ton of kids out of district for special services, but the ones we do, those programs can be quite expensive. We've done a good job of bringing most of those kids back and creating our own programs to cover their needs. But every once in a while, somebody might be visually impaired, and they need to go to the highly specialized school for kids who are visually impaired. So that's sort of the high-level overview. And then I think I'm sort of, I'm here to respond to questions if you have questions or things you're wondering about. At the end, I could give you a little update on the high school project, but that's separate from the budget.
Chuck?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You want me to go through my couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I think that, first of all, I think you guys are doing a great job in difficult situations. A lot of unknown right now. There's challenges to our values, as far as I can see. And I think it's really great. I had the chance this year to go to visit the school twice. Once I got invited in with Sheri to talk about some of the Mohican work that we're doing for the eighth graders. And then the other time, I read the book to the third graders. And what struck me is, of course, you guys knew the right book to read. I had no idea. And the librarian, librarian of middle school, I mean, I should say the lawyer, it's the muddy part.
Dan.
Dan Weston. So Dan and the teacher picked a book, and it was this great book about, I can't remember the name, but it was basically about a black girl sitting on the fence and trying to make friends with the white girl on the other side of the fence. And they end up bringing their families together, and it was really wonderful. And before I get into my specific questions, I just want to say, I can't imagine how tough it is where you're literally being threatened with tremendous cuts in funding if you don't... This isn't about DEI or about kind of, you know, politics. It's about common decency, like kids getting together and having sort of been friends. I mean, and I just wanted to, you know, the worry we have, of course, is, you know, I don't see anywhere any anticipation of what might happen. I guess maybe there's just so much uncertainty now, we can't do that. But man, I do not envy the position you're in. So I have a couple of questions, but believe me, they're not in any way, you know, critical because frankly, what we're dealing with right now is insanity, you know?
The one thing I'll say sort of about the context, I'm really happy we're in Massachusetts and Oklahoma or Florida or any other number of places. In an unusual moment, the Massachusetts Secretary of Education, which is part of the executive office, is also for the moment the Commissioner of Education, right? He's doing both jobs, which never happens because there's like a temporary thing. And he's just really thoughtful and valuing things that matter. He came maybe three weeks ago to Monument and did a whole talk on financial aid for seniors who were applying to college, and was really good and on. But there, at the state level, they're doing the best they can to buffer us from some of the uncertainty. And who knows where it's all going to land, but for the moment, we're doing okay.
And just one other point, when I was on, so Sheri, our tribal liaison, was in Wisconsin when the boys' folks invited us in. So I had her on the speakerphone for all the kids, right? And it was great. We showed the blanket they gave us and all the rest of it. And at one point, one of the kids asked a question, it's like, what are teenagers like on the reservation? And you could almost hear Sheri's eyes roll. She's like, they're like teenagers everywhere. And yet, in that moment, there was more learning in that moment because it was sort of an off-the-cuff, of course, they're just kids. They all kind of recognized right then that there's not any difference between kids are kids, you know? It was really kind of a cool moment. And I just wanted to say, it was really great to get in there and make those connections. And, you know, someone could say that's the eye of DEI, and it's just basically, you know, including the tribe and discussions and educating folks that I see absolutely no problem with that. And I commend you for, you know, for having those shared values. So anyways, let's get onto the specifics. Um, you know my position on tuition, I don't really want to get into it, but I would, it would be nice if we renegotiated these contracts, we at least saw an increase in, if our operating costs are going up 6% or 7% a year, it would be nice if we could convince our partners in other towns who, some of whom have significantly lower tax rates than we have, you know, on average, if we could just create a shared burden mentality, you know?
And I agree with you, there's been some discussion about time. We've come a long way with those rates.
Yeah, I know.
And where they used to be 20 years ago and where they are now, like four, five percent increases. But there's been some discussion about could we tie the increases to the increase to the towns?
Yep.
And I think there's a lot of merit in that.
Yeah.
And it's still a big gap to close, but we can make progress on it.
Yeah, and I just go back to, you know, when I was on, I majored in economics, but I was involved in the school newspaper work, so I knew how to do layout. When I was 21, I started a design studio, and I actually grew, I had BSO in Boston as a client, Boston Ballet. That is a low-capital, great job to get into if you have at least some skills. And a lot of the kids who would take a class like that are the kind of folks who have really way better skills than me on this. But, you know, I just want to point out that a little bit of extra revenue might have protected that position. And I don't like, that's the one that really, like you said, it's the one position that I would rather not see cut because it's just really tough to then restart it in the future. And that might cost, you know, it's like looking for ways that kids can stay here and make a living around here. And local designers, I'm still in that business, and local designers make 150 bucks an hour. You know, it's like a job you can raise a family on, and I would just, if there's any way to revisit that one issue, the rest of it is kind of, you know, just details.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, and I think there's some opportunities there. 14 years ago, when we had a tough budget from the governor, we eliminated that position, and we probably lived with it, what do you think, three years?
Three or four.
Yeah, and then we brought it back. So if we could figure out a way to generate a little more revenue, I'd like to bring it back. The other one that I think, Patrick, you're aware of, but everybody else may not be aware of, is in the context of the high school project, we did decide to add a fourth vocational program, and that's the program to prepare people to be electricians. So we did some of that similar math. There's a real shortage of electricians in all of Berkshire County, but particularly South County. The income that people can earn pretty quickly out of school as they're building their work is significant. So I think that's a step in the right direction.
Is the 617 on excess or deficiency, is that about what you typically rely on, or has that gone up?
No, we usually allocate most of our excess deficiency to the next year and then hopefully money comes back in. Where we had sort of more sustainability in doing it was for many years in a row, and I think this is why we got to the point with the Berkshire Health Group now, that there were payment holidays and we'd get more money back.
So you explained that excess deficiency is equivalent to town free cash.
Right, right.
So it's basically leftover money at the...
So it's leftover money at the end. And when, and one could argue whether having the payment holidays from the health group was a good thing or not, like it was good while you were getting the money, but now when there's a 16% increase, it's not so good, right? But that sort of refilled the E and D well, and there are fewer ways to do that going forward.
And is there some risk that if that doesn't get certified, that all of a sudden we're in the hole a couple of points for the next year's budget? Are you confident that that's going to stay?
No, we manage it pretty tightly. I don't, there are other things I'd worry more about, like we get about $1 million in federal funding, and if something happens in Washington, then that may be more vulnerable than...
Do you sense, speaking of that, some of these freezes are going into place outside of the regular budgeting cycle. Do we have a plan if something crazy out of Washington happens like that, like they're demanding that you cut a program or get rid of some books or do something that you're just not comfortable doing?
Well, I mean, if you've been following the news, I think Springfield got really dinged because they had this ESER money, right? Like the education money connected to COVID, and you had to spend it by a certain time, and then they got extensions. So the feds tried to claw back the money that wasn't spent. We're pretty intentional about, we get the money and we spend it on important things.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm talking about if they, if it's punitive based on politics. That's the part that worries me, when they sent out the letters to districts and to the state education officials saying, you know, you've got to cut out these programs or else we're cutting you off.
Let me give the honest answer, Patrick. When Peter came here 15 years ago, we had nine C cuts, which were mid-year cuts.
Nine what?
Nine C cuts, they're mid-year cuts.
Oh, yeah.
There's no way to plan for that.
Right.
You meet with the union and say, what can we do?
Right.
They're going to cut your, they're going to cut your revenue. It's the middle of the year. And so the answer is, there is no plan.
There is no plan.
I mean, it's an honest answer.
But I think it's important that the folks out there know that, you know, that this is like, you know, this is real.
Yeah. It's hanging over your head like a guillotine.
Yep.
And, you know, if you're going to have cuts going into a budget, that's bad.
Yeah.
But to have them in mid-year, that's tremendously stressful, and there is no good answer.
And if for anybody watching, because a lot of people watch our tapes after the fact, this is Steve Bannon, he's the Chair of the School Committee and the Chair of the Great Barrington Select Board. Thank you, Steve.
And also Sarah Tannen, he's joining.
Sarah, hi.
And she's one of the Stockbridge reps on the squad. So the federal funds that we get, it's a little less than $1 million, and it's really in three buckets. So it's for Title I, which is for kids from poor families, right? And that's pretty tied up in law, and it's pretty protected. So I don't think it's likely anything will happen there. The second big pot of money is IDEA, which is Special Education Funding, and that's even more tied up in law. So and it's really unseemly to take money away from a school district to support kids with special needs.
And then SNAP, right?
And then the last one is food, right? So like through the USDA, and we get access to some food, we get some free food that we prepare, and then we get some other resources. And I think that's pretty protected, too. What's hard to anticipate is sort of how, and I think colleges are in a much worse situation than we are, but how the folks in the White House are using their leverage to try to push change in behavior.
Yeah. At least ironically, a million out of a 30-something million-dollar budget is, I think, less than some of the urban districts. So at least we're a little more insulated than others might be. Um, let's see. Yeah, I wanted to just echo the point that you made on smoothing around. It's my understanding that the Berkshire County health systems have used up about half of their kind of their reserve, you know? And I think that on the years where rates are low, we should encourage them to, and we don't really, I mean, you know, you guys have the person in the room, we don't, but, you know, we should encourage them to kind of keep the coffers full on years where the rates are low, because the rates are really high, and yet they're still also trying to build up their reserves again. That lack of, that's what blew up the budget this year.
Yeah, no, we probably had like four or five years that were relatively good in relation to insurance, and then this year's really hard.
Yeah.
Right? And we can continue to talk to them to do a better job.
I just have one other question. Is the November decision ballot or town meeting or both?
So it's, we've decided on the date, which is November 4th, but we were advised by bond council that we should vote on what we're doing, or the school committee should vote on what we're doing, in June, when we actually have a final figure. So in the Mass General Law, there are two ways you could vote, 16D and 16N. 16D is to do it at town meetings, and 16N is to do it by ballot. My recommendation to the school committee, but they're not taking any action on this yet, is to do it by 16N, which is what they did at Wacona or in Dalton and all the surrounding towns. And 16N, my understanding is there are two parts to the ballot question. So the first part is to approve the project, and then the second part is to do the two and a half exclusion. And the first part would be counted as the aggregate of all the voters in the towns. But the second part is town by town. The last time we tried to vote on the high school, we did it 16D instead of 16N.
Or is it majority in each town then?
Right.
Right.
So I think 16N is, makes a little more sense and is potentially a little more advantageous.
I just bring it up because we may not have a town, a special town meeting in November, just as our, for an FYI.
Yeah, so I mean, my intention is to do it by 16N, but that'll get formally decided by the school committee sometime in June. Sort of transition to the high school project, we anticipate we'll have, we're planning a big public meeting on June 16th, which is a Monday, it also happens to be the last day of school, unless we have any more snow days, and I'm hoping we have no more snow days, but you never, you never know. We think we'll have pretty close to final cost estimates on June 12th, which will let us share those on June 16th.
I want to defer back to you. I don't have any other questions on the budget. Jamie, do you have, before we get to the schools?
So I just had a couple of questions. So when would the vocab, the electrician programs start?
So that would start likely as we open a new school, so.
Oh, not for a few years.
Right. I mean, there's one possibility, we could start it a year before we opened the new school, and we're not there yet.
Okay. And has there been any, I'm not clear, and I apologize about Richmond, have they chosen to join in or not join in?
The Richmond thing's an ongoing conversation. So that decision gets made at the select board level.
Okay.
They had a school committee meeting two or three months ago, and the school committee, I think, voted that did not express interest in moving forward, but that vote isn't the binding vote. The select board would be the binding vote. And as you know now, or probably know, like we have a tuition agreement with Richmond because they end in eighth grade, and the bulk of their kids come to us for high school, though they send a few students to Lenox, and some of their choice students who are from Pittsfield go back to Pittsfield for high school.
So the choice students does help the budget, right?
Yes, and it's super complicated, and people debate it all the time. So for a typical choice student who comes without special needs, the receiving district gets $5,000, which is less than the cost of any of that student.
Much less.
But if, say Michael were a high school English teacher, and he had 16 kids in his class, it doesn't cost us anything to put...
One more kid.
One more, for that matter, four more kids in this class. It costs us something significant if we take in like 20 choice students, and then we need to hire another teacher, right? So the big debate is, or the metaphor I always use is, it's like I'm selling empty seats on an airplane, right? And if they're empty seats, it's better to fill with seats than to not fill them. The recent rebuttal people have been saying is, maybe your airplane doesn't need to be as big as it is. And there's some, there's some merit to that. So we're right in the middle of that now. The number of kids you take at the high school, you have more flexibility because they go in all different directions. The number of kids you take in the elementary and middle school, you have less flexibility because you go over whatever the class size is that you want. And either then you've got very crowded classes, or you end up hiring another teacher. But we're very deliberate about that and try to keep class size within our guidelines. Every once in a while, we go over and try to leave a little cushion in case somebody moves in to any one of our towns with twins or triplets or something.
Right. Okay. I think that was kind of it, because a lot of it's just nebulous, like we don't know what the federal government will do, like if the 25 bills in the legislature will pass, you know? So we'll see.
Yeah, and then the other thing, I mean, it's important to know, is like the, we build our budget around the governor's budget, and then the House and Senate weigh in separately, and it's this sort of constant horse trading negotiations. Typically, what happens is they allocate a little more money than the governor does, which is like the starting opening. There's also, we're in the middle of a supplemental budget that's happening right now, and it's my understanding, yesterday, the House fully funded regional transportation at like 100%, which is great, right? We'll see what happens.
24% goes to the MBTA, though, so that wasn't so great.
No, I know. But if we get 100% instead of 85%, and we're paying our bus company $2 million, that's significant money, right? And then that's, that money drops into like a revolving transportation account, but then we can use that money to...
Are you talking about transportation with the schools?
Yeah.
Not the general...
Like regional school bus transportation.
Like getting the kids to inform, right?
So everything's in flux, it all helps. There's also talk at the state level about redoing the funding formula for schools because it hasn't changed in 33 years, in a significant way.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
It seems like a lot of times it's skewed toward urban districts because they have the votes in the legislature. I don't care who ends up being there, you know?
Well, the votes and the people.
Yeah, that's right, right, right.
Do you want me to talk a teeny bit about the high school project? Is that helpful?
Sure. Unless Katie, do you have questions?
I don't know, yeah.
Okay. So that's moving along. Sometime if you want, our big conference room upstairs has design ideas as the project keeps evolving. And it's starting to get really interesting, and the architects are doing a really good job. So the architects from two firms, Donna Denisco and her company, and then William Ron. And William Ron's sort of well-known for doing a lot of colleges and university, but also did the new building at Tanglewood.
That's the million and a half we put in with the $500,000 from each town, like last year or the year before, was that right?
Yes, yes. So that's the money that's paying for this because the MSBA paid for it already.
Right.
Once. And they're narrowing down their design choices, doing some really interesting things with HVAC systems and sustainability, starting to look at landscape stuff. The design's neat, and I think you'll really like it, and it's good. We're starting to get initial estimates of costs. We signed up for one big energy grant through Mass Save, which is going to save us like a million and a half, $2 million. And then we're on another call today, and we're putting in an application for a green schools project, which might save us an additional $5 million. So I should be able to share an update on that in early June. Yeah, so we're chugging along. And then they formed like a political action committee, a YES committee, so they're starting to take donations and doing some outreach, and there's a bank account and officers and all of that.
Can we ask?
Questions?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Chuck doesn't talk to you.
I don't talk much. Mike, biggest interview, what's your fallback if the school doesn't pass?
Yeah, it's really terrible, so I'll tell you what it is.
I mean, it's a big thing.
It's a really heavy lift. Part of the argument we're going to make is, if we don't do the project, we have to do so. Part of the argument we're going to make is, is if we don't do the project, we have to do something. And what we're going to have to do essentially costs the same as what the project does, except it's all our money. We walk away from maybe $60 million that the state's giving us. And at the end of the day, upgrading a 60-year-old building is still going to cost us like $95 million or $90 million. And, and we end up with, with something that's, that's much less good than, than a new building that's designed to, to do different things, right? So like we could rip the roof off the old building and put on a new roof. It's not a great thing to do while you're using it, right? We can, that building you know, because your, your role is the fire department, but
We all went to it.
Right, no, but, but it doesn't have sprinklers, right? So then we'd have to retrofit it for sprinklers and, and, and then on and on and on. And, and, and the, the windows are single pane glass and it's not particularly safe or accessible. So then you do all of that. And I really think then you get to the point where you, you put in the same amount of money for something that's, that's less good. And, and that's not a, that's not a, a great option. So we're gonna fight like hell to, to make a compelling argument to get it passed on November 4th. And if for some reason it doesn't pass on November 4th, then, then on November 5th, we'll share, we'll share Plan B. But I don't think Plan B will be anything that anybody's happy with.
Once you do certain percentage of upgrade to the building, and the building isn't valued at that much, you'd have to bring it all up to code within five years. So everyone is asked, that's a good question, what's your Plan B? And the answer is, I have a very good Plan B. And if someone could come up with a Plan B, that would be wonderful, but we don't think there is one that's any less expensive, which would be the reason it would get turned out. We all know that, we're all sorry. The one thing Peter forgot to tell you, through his hard work, we originally were getting 43% reimbursement from the state. Their calculations had a little math error in them and we're now getting 49.5% in extra $6 million. So there, there is some good news, but it's an expensive project.
Yeah.
And
At the time that we
And if we wait 10 more years, first of all, I don't know if the state will ever participate again. We're very lucky they took us in this time. Because at one of the MMA meetings, I met the guy who was in charge at the time and he, before they accepted us, and he apologized and said, I don't think we'll ever take you back. There's so many other schools that will
Are eager.
Pass it.
Right.
He said, we, we, so we're very lucky we're in now. And, um, you know, it's, it's, we get, the price is higher. And 15 or 10 years from now, it ain't going down. It's very scary.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm glad Steve mentioned that. I sort of forgot about it, but, but the difference from 43 to 49% is huge, right?
And that's A million bucks.
Right, and it, and it's, it's that, like, that's because the state's covering that, the towns don't have to cover that. So it's a big deal.
And does the vote on November 4th need a two-thirds or a majority?
Majority.
Can I?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, a couple of observations first, an alternative question. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not, certainly not that familiar with other towns' budgets, but I want the Stockbridge folks who might be watching this, you know, because a lot of people watch the tapes, to just understand that, um, that offsetting an increase in cost versus via, you know, we build a new school is new growth, you know? And, and I think we've got a solid new growth strategy. And I frankly think that here in Stockbridge anyway, that we will more than offset what this might cost frankly with, with, with any one of several new growth opportunities we have. So that's one thing. And I think some of the other towns share that, what you guys are doing with Simon's Rock potentially is fantastic. Yeah, I mean, you can basically put it on the tax rolls, on the tax rolls.
Part of that becomes tax.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So, so I think that all the towns recognize that there's an, there's an offsetting revenue opportunities, you know? And, and, and some of the ones we're looking at include not only property taxes, but also occupancy taxes if there's hotel rooms involved. So, you know, I, I would just first, you know, acknowledge that while it sounds like a lot of money, the amount of money that it costs in terms of, you know, the percentage hit on your taxes is then offset by other opportunities to spread that burden out over more, more residences or more businesses or more whatever it is you're building. So that, that's kind of the first point I would make. The second point I would just make is, you know, I, I had the pleasure, except at the end, of sitting on the RSDPB, the Regional School District Planning Board for three years. And it was, it was a crash course in how, what you guys have been doing for your whole careers, you know, it was like how schools work. And what really, the, the takeaway from that for me was that, that statistic that 50% of the kids in South County either don't go to college or finish college. And, and right there, you know, you think about 50 years ago when McCann first started, you know, they didn't have all the programs that they have up there now. And DeConic, when they first started vocational, they didn't have all the cool programs they have now. And this is a starting point that over the next one or two generations could become something that not only would create career paths of good paying jobs for so many lives and families, but it also keeps kids in the district who then have a job they can raise a family on and, and who are serving the rest of us, you know? It's like literally my boiler failed yesterday, you know, and, and, and I had to like beg baron still to get somebody to come out and fix it, you know, because, you know, it was like, it was cold last two nights. It was two days ago, actually. And, and, and having, finding electricians and plumbers and HVAC folks and everything else, that benefits everyone. Whether you're a second homeowner or a primary resident, all the rest of us benefit from having people in those trades in our communities. And I just would encourage people to recognize that this is a really, you know, that Tybalt, was it Tybalt's study in 1956? Where it was the first time they, they kind of identified that families vote with their feet. People vote with their feet. Good schools, they move to districts that have good schools. And, and the idea that we're not investing our schools hurts our ability to, to attract and retain people in the district who are gonna, we're gonna have to have some people here. So is there a question there? Do you agree?
Yeah. I do and it's sort of, we learned a lot since the last vote. And, and one of the things we learned was the school's got a, really is an obligation to do right by everybody. And, and for a long time, we've done right by kids with narrow academic focus, right? Like we get kids into Yale and Harvard and UMass and BCC, like everywhere. That's great. But we've also now expanded our vocational programs, built those out. And, and a number of students, there'll be an article in the paper tomorrow about Ian Drucker, who, uh, you likely know his, his mom and dad, right? Richard and Hillary, and, and he's a graduating senior, but he started a landscaping business as a, as a junior. And he's going to graduate high school with like almost 100 clients. And he plows and, and, and takes care of their property, does all this stuff. And he's made enough money as a junior to buy a, a truck that's probably nicer than any truck anyone's drive. And, and it's, and it's not just like he's driving a truck because it's nice. Like it's an investment in his, in his business, right? And, and he's going to stay and, and, and he's got people working for him. Like how many 18-year-olds have people working for them, right? And, uh, and, and I think he's going to build this remarkable business. So the whole range of possibilities are happening and it's something I'm, I'm really excited about and proud about.
You mentioned that, that we have a, a, you know, a yes group.
No.
And, and, and my, and just an observation was, you know, a lot of us kind of spent, oh, you, you, we were all part of it. It was like three years of kind of the, kind of the propeller head work. It's like kind of figuring out all the details of what this could possibly be. And at the end, I thought that false claim around, we were just trying to get you to pay for a new high school was really what hurt it. And I hope that there's some, some effort and anticipation of what any misinformation might be. Because after three years, I, I, I have to say, I kind of resented at the end a little bit that we went out of our way to make it so that nobody else was paying for this high school. And I think, think that Grayberry and West Stockbridge and Stockbridge were actually, you know, going to step up with 90, 95% of the cost of that program, had that merger gone through. And it was, it was just so, you know.
I hope we learned our lesson because this is my fourth building project. And I hope with the two failed ones, we learned our lesson, which is there are claims, false claims that, for instance, we will get as the price comes out. Well, if you would maintain this school, you won't be in this problem. Well, in fact, we maintain our school so well, we get extra incentive points for building a new one. So those are all things that we have to explain to people just aren't true. You know, there will be, you need to hire a local contractor, I won't support this project. That's a $150 million project. We can't, there aren't local contractors who are DCAM certified and are large enough to do a project like this. They may be subcontractors. And there are things like that, hopefully we've learned. You're absolutely right. And we can give a rational reason why those arguments are false.
Right, good. In one sentence. Yeah, it's because
No one wants to listen to it.
Right, exactly. All right, that's all I got.
Katie?
I think okay.
Chuck? I'm good.
Yeah, so thanks a bunch.
Good luck.
You have time to get a sandwich at Elm Street Market if you want to, Steve, it's right around the corner.
No, I know, no, we got another
I know, I'm trying to guess, I'm saying.
I do too. Thank you. And Sarah, thank you for joining the committee.
Thank you. Motioned.
Motion to adjourn, please. All in favor?
Aye.